Being a graduate of Elmwood High School. I met my high school sweetheart there and she is also an 18 graduate of Elmwood. Married in nineteen ninety-two, which also happens to be the same year that she started teaching here. Very proud of this community. We raised our three children, they're all graduated. Our youngest just graduated this past year. And what inspired me to be a board member was the fact that I have grandchildren, started about four years. And I want to make sure that Elmwood stays a positive place and building a garden for our children.
Thank you, Mr. Armbrueck. We'll now proceed with the questions. The first question is, are there aspects of your education and experience you feel would be especially helpful to you in this role?
My family and I lived in the district my entire life. I've been involved in the community and athletic programs for over twenty-five years. I've served as Athletic Booster President, we raise ten thousand dollars each year, and donated that back to school to help pay down the athletic account class. We help purchase new uniforms, wrestling mats, and a lot of other things to help fund the children. I've been fortunate to serve in leadership roles for the last twenty years in my professional career, and I believe those experiences will help me put me in position to serve the community as a board member.
Thank you. Why do you believe Elmwood's school should be accomplished?
I believe Elmwood should be provided a safe learning environment for the students and staff while preparing students to be successful members of the society, which I believe Elmwood has done a nice job accomplishing. Elmwood's staff works hard to ensure all students have the tools, experience, and take appropriate classes needed to achieve their academic and career goals. Elmwood did a fantastic job of preparing myself, my wife, and all of my children to be successful adults.
How do you plan on helping support the strategic plan that was adopted last year?
I believe this strategic plan is a great foundation to help leadership of the school stay focused on success of the students. Supporting this strategic plan is essential to achieving the school's mission by promoting the core values to ensure we provide desired outcome for our students.
What are three things that you believe Elmwood is doing right?
I'm pretty proud of Elmwood, I think there's way more than three things. The three things that jumped out to me was they've done very fiscally responsible, they manage their money very well, they provide a safe and caring environment for the students to learn, and Elmwood prepares their students to be successful contributors to society and their graduating.
Conversely, what do you see as three things being kind of missing the mark on?
Once again, I'm super proud of Elmwood and saying this is the mark is pretty correct. I'm not sure we missed a mark on anything horribly or even very badly. I believe there are always group to group moments. I'm very proud of Elmwood and Elmwood successes. If given the chance to serve the board, I'll be anxious to learn more and find ways in areas that need improvement. Leaders at Elmwood should never be content and always look for opportunities to improve educational experience for the students. We own this for students and taxpayers of the community.
How do you see yourself interacting with the community to keep that connection?
I enjoy socializing with new people. I will always be willing to listen to community members. I adore working with the community and utilizing their influence to help Elmwood make the best decisions for our school. I believe building trust and relationships with community members is essential for the success of our school.
What is your ideal model of communication in regards to the chain of command between the school board and the teachers in the class?
I believe the chain of command should always start with the superintendent and allow the higher staff to perform their job professionally. The board should work with superintendent, superintendent will then work through the administrative staff and now through the teachers. School board members should always be approachable and regular listeners for the entire staff. However, I don't feel board members should tell any of the staff how to do their jobs.
If you disagree with others, can you separate that difference and proceed as a team after a vote is taken?
Absolutely. I look forward to working with others, listening to their suggestions, having open minds of their opinions, learning through their insights, and coming together to form the best possible solution for Elmwood and their students.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Armbrueck. We'll now proceed with Mr. Bott. Are there aspects of your education and experience that you feel would be especially helpful in this role?
As a mechanical process engineer, which is what I do for my day job, I have to look at systems and find the best way to do something. There are a lot of critical thinking that goes along with that, and with what I've learned in school, I've learned how to communicate with people, listen on all sides of the problems, come up with the best solution, and learn how to work through conflicts and theories. I feel that all of these skills will be helpful in this position in consequence.
What do you believe Elmwood's school should be accomplishing?
The main focus of Elmwood should be the children. The school system is in place to help the children grow knowledge and skill. Right now, our overall star score, which is what the school is based on, it's the report card, is a three point five. Yes, we are meeting the state standards, but we still need to grow. One area we are struggling with is progression. We have received a one star rating as a district. The goal for Elmwood should be to increase not only all hand boards, but really focus on progression. We want the school to be the best school for our youth if it starts with investing time in classrooms.
But how do you plan on helping implement the strategic plan that was adopted last year?
Well, I plan on helping to support the new strategic plan is define goals to go along with it. A plan should be clearly laid out, how items will be implemented at when. When I create a plan for a project at work, I have to have a timeline, and when the objectives will be met, and how am I going to be able to accomplish them. In this plan that we just adopted, there is no definition on when and what objectives will be met. To me, this plan is just a baseline on what we want to accomplish. I would like to help to define the plan further and actually accomplish what the plan was created to accomplish.
In your eyes, what are three things that Elmwood is doing right?
One of the things is bringing life wise into the school system. Life wise is a great thing to get our students to, and as a Christian myself, there's nothing in the body of God to teach that child to do something wrong. Bring out back into the schools as well as every school in the country needs. The school is very supportive of class trips and museum visits, or for the next games and more. I think that the fifth grade camp is a great place for these younger children to learn about outdoors and build friendships with each other. Yes, it might not seem that long ago, but for me, it was quite a while, it was a long ago that I went through it, and I still remember some of the activities that we did, so I think that was great. Being able to go to the Holocaust Museum, to night school, was a great to learn about the terrible event that had happened in history, and continuing ours to allow our students to go and learn these things, not only fun, but I feel it's a more impactful when they see them and learn about outside of the classroom. I also feel like Elmwood has a lot of great districts to support organizations. These organizations are raising funds for supporting our students. For example, BTL raises funds at the elementary at Gilford. The Academic Boosters Club is recognizing students for their academic achievements. Music boosters raise funds for events for men's students to go to. It's just a few things that the districts to support organizations are doing for our students. A lot of events and purchases would not be possible without the support of these organizations.
In your eyes, what three things is the district falling short of?
I feel like Elmwood's main focus isn't always education. When attending some of the board meetings, there seems to be, there always seems to be something that involves sports. I'm not saying sports are bad, and I don't say kids, however, they seem to have a larger priority than education. And then as to my question two, Elmwood's not doing a great job of progression. We should try to prioritize and focus on the areas we are struggling in. With our three point five stars on the report card, even though we are exceeding the state minimums, we should strive to go above and beyond what is just required of us. I also feel like there's no reward for challenging yourself in academics. Since we are on a four point oh rating scale, if you take an A P year of college class, your B area will be a three point oh, just like everybody else taking a regular class. There's nothing wrong with taking the regular class, however, there is no reward for taking a more challenging one. I know for me personally, that I was not only ranked lower in my class because of this, I lost national honor of society and my honors before because of my GPA drop, because of my college classes. I was also not even getting a scholarship to my college because of my GPA because of that. If we grow and raise to a five point oh like other schools now, and give the students that are taking the A P and college classes a better chance for scholarships and my initial gap.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bott. Mr. Brooks. What is your ideal mode of communication in regards to community members to effectively represent them on the board? With this question, sorry. We're gonna do a round robin of the questions if a candidate comes out behind. We will start with the next question of the next candidate.
As a elected member of the Elmwood Local School Board, I will pledge dedication to the relentless commitment to the learning of all of our students. As one of your school board members, I will be a spokesperson for the Elmwood School District Community. I will engage the community and continue in conversation, seeking input from the community members, as well as the students, staff, and the administration. I want to know what your concerns are. I want to know what you believe Elmwood is doing right, and what you believe Elmwood is not, and what it is missing the mark on. I welcome communicating with Elmwood community both by attending board meetings, local community garage meetings, athletic events, and being available a person by phone and or by email. I believe an elected official's accessibility to the community is key to being able to represent them adequately.
What is your ideal model of communication in regards to the chain of command for the school board down through the teachers in the class?
As a member of the Elmwood School Board, communication with the employees of Elmwood is expected to run through the superintendent, such as during labor management meetings. It is superintendent's responsibility to ensure staff have the necessary communication with board members to be able to address their concerns. The job of the school board is to oversee the Elmwood School District runs well. It is the superintendent's job to run the schools. It is the responsibility of the board to provide clear expectation of those goals to the superintendent to ensure that our goals are the same. The superintendent is responsible for carrying out the direction and expectations of the school board. The Elmwood School Board hires and evaluates the continuing appointment of the superintendent and not individual staff members. The members of the board interact with staff by way of serving as impartial decision makers in the due process areas such as findings of fact, applying policy, and reaching conclusions and issuing orders. And for example, would be expulsion proceedings, non-rules, or award terminations of employees. The board should be consulting with not only parents and the superintendent, but also with the teachers and the teacher representative groups working at Elmwood to discuss the pertinent issues of this district to further the academic success of our students. Teachers should not become a board to discuss issues that they have with coworkers, only if there's disagreement between them. There is a grievance process that they would need to go through, and a board is generally not involved in that grievance process. However, in this organization, the teachers should be able to bring their concerns up to the board through the administration and superintendent's office. The superintendent is in charge of the employees of Elmwood Local Schools and now the board. As such, the board should not be bypassing superintendent and communicating with teachers and staff directly.
If you disagree with others, can you separate that difference and proceed as a team once a vote is taken?
As a school board member, should be able to act as part of a team and not as an individual. All people have varying opinions and viewpoints. It is common for people to disagree on these points. However, what sets me apart is that I'm not afraid to voice my opinion when I am in opposition with other persons or media group. If I should have a differing opinion with an issue on the board that is requiring a vote, I will still vote in line with my beliefs and how our community members have informed me that their goals are. The school did not, could help move this school district forward. I am not a person who will change my statements or vote just to please others who may be trying to pressure someone into going along in a certain direction. At the end, I still would work professionally as a team, as we all should have the same goal, which is the dedication to the best education of our children.
What aspects of your education and experience do you feel would be especially helpful?
As I said, I spent six years in the Navy. In the Navy, you have to work as a team, take orders through a chain of command. I then became a bachelor of criminal justice administration from Tifford University. I've been in law enforcement administration for, been in law enforcement for almost thirty years, and actually administrative for almost twenty years. I have experience with how employee contract disputes are handled and resolved. I know how to work with a team, how to lead that team to accomplish a mission through systematic identification of target goal, and how to identify steps to reach that goal, and how to set benchmarks to measure our progress that we are actually meaning to achieve our goal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Heiser. We will start with question two. What do you believe Elmwood's school should be accomplishing?
Looking at the stars rating, Elmwood is a three and a half out of five, so there's some room for improvement. I feel that the school could be accomplishing more than we're ready to improve that rating. The area that is lacking most is progress, which shows the elementary, middle, and high school levels. It is described as the component that closely looks at the growth our students are making based on their past performances. Shows there is significant evidence that the school fell short of its student growth expectations. I would investigate it a bit further to determine how the state reached those conclusions. That will take a collaboration from all the administration and staff to formulate a plan to help raise the bar in this area. Communication and understanding will be important when developing a systematic approach to improve the star's rating. Everyone will have to be open minded and willing to accept change when needed to, and it always must have the best interest for the students as a top priority no matter the cost. Aside from stars rating, I would attach some conditions or goals to the superintendent and administrators who are looking for contract renewals. There should be evaluations done with objectives and goals outlined for every area of the contract. The board should collaborate and determine the direction they want the next year or two or three to go based on input from the staff, community, and administration. There will be milestones set as deemed appropriate by the board to determine progress. Any future contract renewals will be based on reaching those milestones.
How do you plan on helping support the new strategic plan that was adopted last year?
I feel the strategic plan is a good idea, it's good in theory. I have permission, vision, and thought through the strategic initiatives. I can support those ideas. I think there is a need to have a clear map of how those ideas will get done. For example, how are we going to operate with accountability and integrity? How are we going to enhance internal and external communication? It's easy to say those are the right things to do, but how exactly? What is the process to implement the strategic initiatives? I will dedicate my time and resources to help structure methods that will enable this plan to reach its full potential. I will improve communication to help build hope and trust within the community, utilizing accountability, integrity, and open minds of communication between the staff, community, administration, and students.
In your view, what three things is Elmwood doing right?
Last year, they switched to a phonics-based curriculum. It's a big step in the right direction. It's a science-based approach that is now being recognized as the best way of learning how to read. Just have to make sure all teachers are following through with this method in the classroom. Creating and developing the strategic plan I am ongoing with over our concept. I feel I can help with the implementation process of this plan. Being that it is so new, it will evolve and adjustments will continue to be made in order to meet the demands, meet the outcomes of the plan. I like the new safety initiatives that are in place. Two sets of double doors that filter visitors into the offices that are school. Also, the new safety grant designed to improve the speaker system for better communication throughout the school and stadium in case emergencies make sense. Moving the resource officers' office to inside the main entrance to help be able to intervene if a situation happens and adopting the see something, say something outline for students, staff, and community allows for open-minded communication in case of threat.
In your opinion, what three things is Elmwood missing the mark on?
I feel that the administration of the school board needs to have a better understanding of what the teachers need in order to help with the education process. We need to do a better job of understanding the needs of the students walking in the door. There needs to be more resources to treat the behaviors and developmental delays so that it doesn't affect their academic progress in later years. Resources such as a stronger intervention program and admin staffing. Our leaders and teachers need to work together to help develop strategies to support the education systems of our students. Teacher retention. We need to do a better effort in teacher retention. We want to keep the good teachers we have. In order for that to happen, we need a better understanding of why they are looking to leave and go elsewhere. I propose we get paid for surveys to everyone that receives a paycheck from the school so we can have a better understanding of what is actually going on. This will be separated from the strategic planning survey that was sent out last year. The survey will focus on a needs assessment. Exit interviews for all employees should be done by a board member, not the superintendent. The exit interview is essential for hitting to the root of why staff are leaving. In my opinion, would be most, staff would be most honest and open when they're interviewing if it was a member of the board. Also, the board would have a way to circle back to address problems that were brought up and enforce accountability. Early intervention. Getting intervention at an earlier age will allow for a stronger beginning and will help to eliminate the ripple effect when kids get older. Many times, if students are not given intervention right at the start, they will continue to struggle academically throughout their academic career. It is necessary to address the issues immediately so we can put the kids on a good developmental path, improving the chances for reaching a higher academic achievement.
Okay, thank you. That's time to move on to Mr. Lee. We'll be starting with question six. How do you see yourself interacting with the community members to be able to effectively represent them in your decision making?
Thanks, Bill. I've lived in Jersey State for three, seven years. I served on village council, then elected as mayor, and now completing twelve years on the school board. I've been active in my community as a firefighter. I've chosen to raise my children in this community. I love serving this community. I've never had a challenge with a neighbor or community member that we couldn't discuss in a positive manner. I believe that I am grounded in our belief system as a community. Know what we expect and continue to work to represent the values of our communities. I am always open to discussing concerns and even feel comfortable pushing back when someone is missing some facts. The community is strong, filled with amazing individuals who want the best for their children and neighbors. We should always be open to quality discussions, even or especially when we don't agree. And I try hard every day to be that person.
What is your ideal mode of communication in regards to the chain of command from the school board on down to the teachers in the class?
For me, this is simple. I should be talking to the superintendent and treasurer as an individual board member. They have the responsibility to run our school. The daily operations are their purview. So when someone comes to me with a challenge, whether a teacher or community member, I always listen and I always will listen, but will then ask what they found out when they spoke with the person who was responsible. I always share conversations I've had with community staff, community and staff with the superintendent.
If you disagree with others, do you feel you can separate that difference and proceed as a team member after it is taken?
I have a long history of this. Believe me, I have not always been on the same page as my colleagues on the board, but I will never let a disagreement or a difference of opinion cloud my working relationship with them. I've learned through my faith and family upbringing that all people have value. Because of what I, because of that, it would be extremely hard to demonstrate everyone has value through my interactions with all. I fail, but I work extremely hard and always treat everyone with respect, even when I disagree with them.
What are the aspects of your education and experience that you feel would be especially helpful to you in this position?
I've had the great pleasure of being immersed in education since I began school at Perry's Elementary. As a kindergarten student so many years ago, I am proud, I'm a proud Elmwood grad in ninety-four, and was well prepared to study at Holy Grange State University. My undergraduate degree is in education, along with my master's degree in educational leadership. I've had the pleasure of teaching for North Baltimore, Elmwood, Four County Career Center, Vanguard Career Center, and Penn State Career Center. What does you mean is that I've had the pleasure of teaching kindergarten students through sixth grade at North Baltimore, ninth and tenth grade students here at Elmwood, eleventh and twelfth grade students at Penn State, and adult students at Four County and Vanguard Center. I'm currently the director of Career Tech Education at Penn Career Center, and am responsible for our entire high school and adult education options for students here in Northwest Ohio. To add to my twenty-five years of education, I've had the joy, I've had the joy and opportunity to serve the Elmwood community for the past twelve years on this board. I believe that I have something to offer our team at Elmwood, and I hope to continue serving our students and staff.
What do you believe Elmwood's school should be accomplishing?
Our newly adopted mission, vision, core values says it all. Providing agent educational pathways for our students to reach their full potential. Operate with accountability and integrity. Prioritize opportunities that promote student growth, leadership, and respect.
How would you help support the strategic plan that was adopted last year?
I had the pleasure of working on the strategic planning committee, watching our staff and administration actively engage in discussions, provide feedback about what our deficiencies are and where we need to celebrate our great work. I was blown away by the quality of the product. The four initiatives should be a solid foundation for improving areas that need enhancements. As our administrative team and staff move forward, my role is of board members to support their work as they plan, implement, and evaluate the district's work in bringing these initiatives to life.
In your eyes, what three things is Elmwood doing right?
There are way more than three, but here are a few that stand out to me. Number one, providing students with outstanding opportunities to grow academically through sound curriculum and quality instruction. We have an awesome staff. Number two, providing teachers and staff with the resources and support to do their best every day as they work with their families and with our children. And number three, the fiscally responsible decision-making by the administration and board has been impressive and led to one of the lowest tax burdens on our community when compared to any of our neighboring schools. Finding balance between the needs of students and maintaining a live within your means attitude has guided our schools for many, many, many years.
And that is time. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee. We will begin with question number five. In your eyes, what are the three things Elmwood is missing the mark on?
Okay, great. I've heard from multiple sources about increasing funding in Holy as small. These issues close to home with me because I was often lonely when there was a school. There are times when locations are roused, it's just washing my bathroom or locker room with beer centers for me. So, I notice sometimes I'm a little too old for those type of things. I can't help but wonder if I've worked on it down here. I hope we can now recognize contained behavior, which will prepare us from underlying causes. In case bullying victims should be protected first, it should never be applied to their investigators as a favor of the school.
How do you see yourself interacting with the community to enable effective communication to represent them in the decision making process?
I didn't finish my question. I'm sorry. Can I continue?
Sure.
Sure, okay. The second thing I'd like to see is a reduction of sign-offs from parents. By this, I don't mean athletic or related sign-offs. I mean curriculum-related sign-offs. My wife and I went into some lab where waivers sent home for something that needs to be done in the school. And I was just going out everywhere for my parents to sign off on something that's going to be taught, except for the health class. So, to me, those sign-offs suggest the controversial age inappropriate line is about to be crossed. Since my siblings, I went through school without the need for such a sign-off, I can't help but wonder if these line crossings are necessary to achieve the school's educational goals. In addition, anytime those sign-offs are deemed necessary, I would like parents to have details as to why. have details as to why, not simply I'd like to do this in class while soliciting subject whether the child may be exposed to it and what I think is necessary. Then my third issue is, the last few years, it's always the same thing. It's state and federal government don't always get it right regarding school policy. Going forward, I'd like to see these Elmwood students, the rest of our local community, including parents, teachers, and administrators, take precedence over any federal or state dictates, even if funding may appear to be underlined. Children's best should be held in answer. I'm not agreeing with any special debate.
Yeah?
Okay, all right. How do you see yourself interacting with three members? Do you hear my work as an author readily available on social media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, WeWe? I'm a member of a community that I'm related in community layer groups on Facebook and check them frequently. Since I have kids involved in sports and band, I'm also often in school functions. And my email credit based account is always available for anyone who sent me email. The ID is set up, I'm with specific, addressed by YouTube.
What ideal mode of communication in regards to the chain of command with the school board down through the teachers and the classroom would be seen?
I'd like to understand the chain of command in Elmwood. The school board decisions made by three members of the agreement flow from the school board to superintendent to administrators and teachers in the classroom. And in reference to our issues in the classroom, we'll back up to the board. Generally, if it gets a place, grandiose board member, I'd like to be able to sit here to anyone with any concern, whether you position on that chain, include beyond that chain, or my ability in action is limited to a solitary board member.
If you disagree with others, can you separate that difference and proceed as a team member after it is taken?
Okay, when I first wrote this question, I thought it was a little ambiguous. If we're talking about policy issues that don't defy legal or laws standards, then I have no problem supporting those decisions in terms of our board business, drivers of whatever I personally agree. That doesn't prove good to find better solutions in the future. Counterbalance, negotiation, and casual surrender will suit other persons to part in any corporate and dysfunction, any human interaction applied to that.
What aspects of your education and experience do you feel especially helpful in this position?
Yeah, I feel like being a member of the school board, I have a deep, sincere affection toward Elmwood, its community, with a strong technical background, a passion for reading and communication, and a true passion for problem solving and interpersonal skills. I also have a good follow back on a lot of common sense, and when listeners listen, I wish to tell them, at least understand all side of the issue if I don't agree, drives my wife crazy. At this point, I have children in tennis school. I don't have any, have a mentorship penalty seal, so I can go for contracts for, and then without having to prove myself, and I tend to avoid much of my board or go to.
Okay, thank you. Next up, this is science. We will begin with question number two. What do you believe Elmwood School could be accomplishing?
Number one, I believe Elmwood School should be accomplishing an environment that's safe and supportive for all students and staff. I also believe they should be encouraging higher education growth for the district in a manner of great value. And as a district, we should be focusing on a goal to set up students for success and to be excited with whatever grab they need.
And how do you plan on helping support the new strategic plan that was adopted last year?
To help support the new strategic plan, I plan to keep open communication lines between the board, staff, and the community. Through those open communication lines, I'm hoping to find opportunities for students to seek work experience and feel their interest in it. Quality education is important, and students and staff must feel emotionally and physically safe to learn, which may come from additional safety procedures or updated technology maintenance. The user reach is an excellent source of student achievement for becoming successful members of society.
In your opinion, what three things is Elmwood doing right?
I love this question. The three things Elmwood's doing right, you've heard them talk about the state report card. One of those things on there are your teachers. Teachers here at Elmwood, there's eighty-one percent of them in the accomplished rating, which is awesome, and they always have great plans and opportunities for students and families. Number two, student involvement. If you are ever out here, you will also see many meetings and clubs for students to be involved in, Spanish clubs, vice club, FFA, music booths, row ratings, FCA, I don't know what, but lots of options for students here. And then third one, technology access and options, and not just, and safety procedures and for students here, district that allows Chromebooks for all, and I think that's great because these students will have that the rest of their life too.
In your opinion, what three things is Elmwood missing the mark on?
When I start writing, I have three things that came to mind and that the community has pointed out. Sometimes communication between staff, community, and the board. Number two, the student progress on the grade card, which you have heard about. With that being said, if you look closer at that, the gap losing has improved, if you want to get into that, it's all there on the app. And then the third one, some higher education options for students and incentive to keep those options for them.
How do you see yourself interacting with the community to effectively represent them in board meetings?
I plan to keep an open line of communication and attend a variety of events within the community. Most of you have seen me out here daily. I do feel I'm a approachable person, and I feel I'm able to talk with others about concerns to help address issues that may arise. And as a board member, it's important to talk with a variety of people within the community to consider all sides before making any decisions.
What is your ideal mode of communication in regards to the chain of command from the school board down through the teachers and the classroom?
A chain of command is something all jobs do establish. With that being said, if the person does not feel like their concern is being addressed with another person, should always be pulled in to evaluate the situation. I think it's important for teachers, staff, and administrators to feel their ideas are valid and heard to help make future decisions for the district.
If you disagree with others, can you separate that difference and proceed as a team member after votes taken?
Yes, I do feel I can separate differences after votes are taken. I believe a good, balanced board member, everyone's opinion should be recognized as valuable, and it does not mean everyone has to agree in every situation. Our common goal should be what we feel is best for the district. Sometimes not having all the same thoughts or ways to accomplish goals can be a good attribute to allow all ideas to be considered when the board is not total agreement. Being a team member on the board is important, it is important not to put down the district or other people's viewpoints, but the understanding to help create a positive community and district environment for all.
What aspects of your education and experience that feel, that you feel is especially helpful in this position?
I do feel parts of my experience in education are helpful for an Elmwood school board position. By having kids living in the district for the last fifteen years, I can relate to the community and feel the effects of the district choices. I also bring the perspective of being a teacher and the ability to recognize some of the situations that they're dealing with beyond the district. And with serving on the local church board, it has given me an understanding of what it is to be efficient with others when making decisions for a whole. These experiences together are beneficial in being able to serve as a board member with a variety of experiences and outlooks to bring in each situation.
That's time. Thank you. We have made it through all the questions. I would like to thank all the candidates for their thoughtful responses to these questions, and I thank you for coming today.